Good evening. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is July 14, 2021, and after a 14-month recess due to the COVID pandemic, the meeting is being conducted in person at the Springfield Township Administration Building. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Beginning next month, the Board hopes to provide a live streaming feature for both the workshop and business meeting. Comments will not be accepted remotely, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance will be provided as part of the posted agenda. I want to start out by denying the rumors that somebody put Ex-Lax in the food of the President and Vice President, both of whom are not here. I am presiding as the next senior member of the Board, and the story I'm supposed to tell is that Commissioner Standis has a business conflict, and Commissioner Graham, Vice President Graham, had surgery about a month ago, and he's doing very well, and he's almost ready to come back. But that's why they are not here tonight, and I'm happy after two years to get one last crack at the apple, and I'll try not to misbehave. That said, please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now, aside from the two absences I mentioned, we are in full complement. At this point, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. The Board of Commissioners conducted a special executive session meeting on June 12, 2021, to discuss one matter of litigation and one personnel matter. I have an announcement regarding 380- and 402 Hawes Lane. As part of the July 12, 2021 workshop meeting, the Board of Commissioners reviewed two potential development plans for a 36-unit townhome development on the subject track. The plans will be referred to the local planning commission for additional review and comment and to provide an opportunity to solicit public comment. That meeting is tentatively scheduled for September 7, 2021, in order to avoid the summer vacation season. And I highlight that that's 36 units. The last thing that we looked at a month ago was 41. 41. So they have, at our request, come back with a less dense proposal, and they've configured them two different ways. So that dialogue continues. At this point, it gives me pleasure to invite Barbara Sence, the Springfield Township Opioid Action Committee. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I know you all know me by now, Barb Sence. My husband is here, Bob, and Sue Crather, and also who's on the committee. And we're very grateful that you're going to help us kick out, kick off, our summer No Pledge Challenge. And we've put all of the pledges in front of you, and we've also made a special one for you, with Springfield Township Commissioners here. And the No Shame Pledge is a pledge that was created by Safe Project, which is a national organization we work with a lot. It's a great organization, and they bring a lot of, not just resources, but great education. It's very simple. It's really great for the high schools and middle schools and even elementary schools. It's very straightforward. They work with every, they're a very diverse organization, and they've got a lot of diversity resources in there, which is one of the very few organizations that do in the country. And we thought it was very important, especially since overdose deaths have gone up over 30% in the United States over the pandemic, and they aren't going down right now. It's just really important to talk about not just that, but the stigma surrounding it, because people still sweep it under the rug or say it's not happening. A lot of people have stayed home and overdosed at home, unfortunately, because they weren't, didn't have available resources during the pandemic. And unfortunately, that line is still going up. So we are here to try to get everybody to sign this pledge. We're going to start a challenge in the community, starting with you. We've already worked with Next Play Basketball. They have one of their basketball, what was it, a three-on-three thing at the Orland Courts, which is great. And we're going to start challenging other organizations. Neighborhoods will challenge other neighborhoods. We've got a couple of young lady in, who's going to be a senior at the high school, who's starting a challenge among her friends in the high school. Another young lady who is a freshman in college that was at the high school last year that's going to start the challenge in Chestnut Hill, the business she works at, which is Bradley vax and trying to go for student around. So we're going to try to get as many people that we can to do this. It's about understanding addiction as a disease, learning more about the disease, what contributes to addictive behavior, and to help individuals in recovery and people that you may see on the street. It may be a friend, it may be a family member, it may be somebody you don't know, but not just to walk by and not help them. There are a lot of resources available, and people need to understand that, even if you sit down and have a cup of coffee with them. So that's what this is all about, and that's what we want you to do. So if now you could sign your pledges individually where it says, I'm making the pledge that Mike's face underneath there.
Where do we sign it? On this one or that one?
It's on this one, right here. Like this one?
Uh-huh. Oh, up here, right on this.
Yep.
Okay.
Great. And we'll call right around 8:00 there, and then we'll officially have picked this off. And you'll notice on this sheet, there's a QR code, so if you take that back with you, you can have anybody just scan it, and it'll go straight to the Safe Project website, and they can also take the pledge. When they do that, if they want to put in their email, they'll get the pledge back to them. If you take a selfie and then just tag us, or send us the photo, because we want to collect as many photos as we can, too. And we'll be doing this, like I say, all around the community, nearby communities, and Shell Plan, and hopefully Moose County, and we'll see what we can do.
What we would like to do is take a group shot of us who signed it with you and one of your handouts. And then we can probably give that to Betsy Wallace, and she can submit that with her report on Monday's meeting.
Okay.
And maybe get that in the Chestnut Hill local.
And if you decide that you could do a challenge.
We were kicked that all around. Mike, do you want to pick that one up? We had all sorts of ideas. I don't know that we reached, we were having more fun deciding.
Is it another municipality? Can it be like the school board, the police department?
It can be a school board, it can be, you know, a restaurant, it can be anybody.
We were talking about the fire companies and the school board. So where do you, you were the most vocal. You want to pick a fire company, or what do you want to do? We'll make you king. I became king for a while. It's really fun.
Let's, I guess we could start with the fire companies.
Pick one.
Start with Windmore.
Okay. A Windmore hose company.
That's a great, good question.
Any objection to that?
Nope.
Good.
It's good.
So what would be great if this, we can have a pick, and like maybe a couple of you can just hold that, and we can get a picture of this, and we'll get the challenge started.
Okay. And we'll take that photo after the.
We can do that afterwards, yes.
Right. Which I don't think will be very long.
Do you have any questions?
No. You going to collect these from us?
You repeat those. Repeat those, and if you want, take a selfie and send it to us.
No, I just wanted to lend a pause for this, because if you have had addiction touch your life, you know that it is not only the one who suffers from addiction, but it's the family members who suffer from the addiction and the community at large. And it is, a lot of times, it is the shame and the silence that allows that disease to be perpetuated. So the better, taking this cause, making it so public, championing it the way you have, hopefully we can remove some of that stigma that prevents people from reaching out for help, whether it's family members or addicts themselves. I just, I really do think it's fabulous, because recovery is possible, and we have examples of recovery all over our township. And so, it really is.
And we try, Sue, and we know, of course, we're first-hand after living through the stigma and learning about it ourselves. And there are a lot of resources for the parent groups and for kids, and just like I say, sitting down and just having a cup of coffee with somebody that also is in recovery for this. So whatever we want to do, we'll do.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Barb. You and your group have been tireless advocates of this, and we certainly appreciate it, and the community is better for it. At this point.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Just as a follow-up question. I know initially, our police department had been issued the Narcan shot, I guess, you know. Are we still, are we still doing that?
Yep.
So every policeman has one of these kits, so if he runs in, he or she runs into a problem, they can administer it.
And that's also why we do the Narcan giveaways.
Yes, the giveaways, yep, yep.
To give it out to the community.
Yep.
It would be very successful. We've done a couple of those also.
Great.
Good, thank you.
At this point, the Board is open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Do we have any public comment at this point? Going once, going twice. Okay, we will move to the committee reports. So we're now on the agenda, and I will take the first two. First one is coming from Commissioner Standis, is Community Development Import, which is Resolution 1535. The Springfield School District Athletic Field Land Development Plan is located at the southeast corner of Paper Mill Road and Church Road. The project includes the demolition of the former Enfield Elementary School building and many of the associated improvements in order to construct two softball fields, a multipurpose athletic field, a recreational walking trail, and associated parking and stormwater management facilities. The school district has also agreed to construct concrete curbing and a macadam paved walking path along the entire Church Road frontage of the property, and to provide a voluntary contribution to facilitate the construction of off-site pedestrian connections to the property. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1535, a resolution granting preliminary and final land development approval for the Springfield School District Athletic Field Project. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Moving on to the second matter on the agenda, which is mine as the head of the Internal Affairs Committee, the bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the June check reconciliation in the amount of $551,624.70 in the July bill listing, the amount of $1,207,816. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. That concludes my report, and let's move on to Commissioner Wilson, who is the chairman of the Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee, and will also be giving the public, be giving the report of the Parks and Recreation Resources Committee of Commissioner Graham.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Harbison. I have one report, and I have a resolution. So my report is on the recycling for the month, and pleased to report that during the month of June 2021, Springfield Township residents recycled 216.87 tons of materials with a householder participation rate of 82.7%. The net cost for the month was $18,138.70. My resolution is Number 1536, Recycling Services Agreement. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1536, a resolution authorizing a six-month extension to the recycling service agreement between the Montgomery County Recycling Consortium and J.P. Mosquero &amp; Son, Inc. The Recycling Consortium is in the process of soliciting new bids for the processing of recyclable materials, transfer station operations, and the hauling services. The six-month extension is necessary to evaluate the bid responses and to allow for a proper transition. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay, so on behalf of Commissioner Graham, who I'm sure is missing us, and we're missing him, I'm pleased to, I have a resolution regarding Parks and Recs Professional Day. Since 1985, America has celebrated July as the nation's official Park and Recreation Month. Each month, the Pennsylvania Parks and Recreation Society recognizes the men and women who ensure that parks and recreational facilities and programs are available to all Commonwealth residents by recognizing Parks and Recs Professional Day on the third Friday in July. Locally, the Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of the township's parks, facilities, and recreation programs provided during the COVID pandemic. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution 1537, a resolution recognizing July 16, 2021, as the Parks and Recreation Professional Day in Springfield Township, and invite all residents to visit a local park or recreational facility and to thank a coordinator, counselor, lifeguard, landscaper, coach, or other professional responsibility, responsible for maintaining or promoting leisure and recreational activities. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
The only comment I would make, and this is a rare opportunity, to make a comment on a very, very worthwhile recognition of all the people who do work so hard with our Parks and Recs, that I'm pleased to announce that I have personally visited 57 of our state's 121 state parks. And I'm pleased to report that every state park I visited was exceptional, was special in its own way, was well-maintained, easily accessible, and free. And it served, it served as a great outlet to my wife and myself during this time of confinement that we were all suffering through with COVID. And if you haven't visited, if you haven't visited our parks, you know, shame on you. If you haven't visited any of the state parks, you know, take the opportunity, because they're, they're really, they're really something special. And they're close, and by law, they're situated not further than 25 miles from any major town or city in the state. So it's a wonderful program. So that concludes my comments, Mr. Harbison.
Mr. President, if I might just add, while this resolution celebrates our professional park and rec staff, who do a lot to maintain the parks throughout the township, we also have a very healthy contingent of volunteers who do an awful lot to maintain our parks. And so they should also be recognized, and if you see them on the day of note, give them a thanks, too.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. Let's move on to the report of the chairman.
We need a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. We have a, I thought we did vote. We didn't.
No.
Okay.
We have a second.
Too many comments, too many.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay.
So that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Let's move on to the chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Commissioner Harbison. I have two items this evening. The first is concerning our emergency management coordinator. I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Robert J. Chirulanza as the township's Emergency Management Coordinator effective September 1, 2021. An emergency management coordinator is responsible for ensuring that a community achieves proper levels of preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation associated with emergencies or disasters that may affect the municipality. The township's current emergency management coordinator has announced his intention to retire effective August 31, 2021. Detective Corporal Chirulanza presently serves as the township's Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator and possesses all of the necessary training and credentials required of the position. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
My next item is for Police Civil Service Commission. I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint William Suppley of Orland to a new six-year term of service as a member of the Police Civil Service Commission. Mr. Suppley's new term of service shall expire July 16, 2027. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. We move to the chairman of the Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Commissioner Harbison. So I am pleased to announce that the zoning hearing board will resume in-person meeting, where they will meet Monday, July 26, at 7:00 p.m., within this room, in which they're going to hear two applications. The first application from Amy Gordon and Joseph Stefanic, owners of the property located at 710 Glendalo Road in Erdenheim. The applicants have requested a dimensional variance, seeking to construct a front porch to their home that will reduce the aggregate side yard setback requirement by five feet. Each of the proposed side yards will be 10 feet in width. The second application is from Matthew Fumento, owner of the property located at 500 East Gravers Lane in Windmore. The applicant has requested a dimensional variance, seeking to construct a six-foot-high fence at the property line that adjoins Stanton Avenue. The proposed fencing is required to be offset 15 feet from the property. Copies of the application packets are available for review in the Community Development Office during normal business hours in the township building. Any questions that you may have can be addressed by contacting Mr. Pennacow at 215-836-7600. And again, that meeting will be held in this room on Monday, the 26th, at 7:00 p.m. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. Finally, we move to the chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Commissioner Harbison. I have a plethora of items this evening. Moving on up. First is regarding the Ridge Pike Reconstruction Project. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriate township officials to execute roadway lighting and sidewalk maintenance agreements with Montgomery County for public facilities that are to be constructed as part of the Ridge Pike Reconstruction Project. The Ridge Pike Reconstruction Project includes roadway widening and other safety improvements along the length of Ridge Pike from the city of Philadelphia to Norristown. In Springfield Township, the project runs from Northwestern Avenue to Manor Road, and will include the construction of an additional eastbound travel lane, along with sidewalks on both sides of the roadway. Springfield Township portion of the project is expected to be out for bid later this year, with construction beginning in 2022. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Second item is regarding Walnut Avenue Pedestrian Trail. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a grant agreement with Montgomery County for a Montco 2040 implementation grant, the amount of $200,000, to facilitate the construction of the Walnut Avenue Pedestrian Trail Project. The project includes the construction of a pedestrian trail on the west side of Walnut Avenue from Orland Mill Road to Sandy Run Park. Total cost of the project is estimated to be $292,809. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Quick, quick comment.
Yes.
One, just very excited about the continuing progress that we have made on bringing this section of trail to fruition, but I also want to sing the praises of our assistant township manager, Brandon Ford, who's making, getting these grants look easy, but it really does take a tremendous amount of work, and it is greatly appreciated, his efforts in these areas that certainly help these projects.
Mm-hmm. I would second.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Brandon.
I have a question.
Peter.
Do we have a start date on this, or?
We do not, though we can start design on it. As you'll see later in Mr. Lee's report, we have another grant application that we are going to submit in order to get the balance of the funding.
So we'll.
It's my 17th motion.
So we'll wait until we get all the funding before we go forward?
Yeah, we have some time, we have some time in the grant agreement that we have presently, or that you just authorized execution of.
So the likelihood this will be all done in 2022, is that, is that a fair estimate, or?
It would probably be aggressive timeline.
Aggressive, okay, just so that there, you know. Residents understand, it's not going to happen tomorrow.
But it will happen.
But it will happen. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Lee, you're on. We voted on it, right?
No, you did not.
We did not, okay.
You have a second.
See, I did it again. You know, I've chaired over 200 of these meetings, including workshops. You'd think I'd get it right, but I guess I'm a little rusty. We have a motion and a second. Are there, why don't we call it to a vote? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Third item, in accordance with Section 1501.2 of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the sale of the following pieces of used equipment via the municipal online auction site. First, 2003 Gravely Promaster 260 Zero-Turn mower. Second, 2004 Ford F-350 bucket truck. The third item, 2003 Carbate Landscape trailer. The Gravely mower will be auctioned immediately upon the remaining pieces of equipment, well, the remaining piece of equipment will be auctioned at a later date. All items valued in excess of $2,500 will be advertised for sale in a newspaper, general circulation, at least 10 days prior to the auction end date. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
I've got a quick question.
You're just doing that to throw me off.
I know. Mike, do we, do we have the prerogative to save for that mower? Can we give that to someone, or do we have to sell it?
I believe under the First Class Township Code, we have to sell it, but unless it's to another municipality.
Well, there's more than just other municipalities. I think you can sell it, for example, to volunteer fire companies and.
Because we came up in conversation today with a member of the Little League who was looking for something like that for veterans, because I think what they have to mow the lawn over at Veterans Park is, I don't know.
It's like a lawn tractor, I think they use.
Yeah. So that would be really ideally what they're looking for. I just don't know, do they need to bid for that, or is it something that we can?
Donate?
Donate to them?
I'm sorry, I'd have to look to see which organizations are exempted. I know volunteer fire companies are, and I think there is a couple of others. I'm not sure that would work, but it might. Maybe with regard to the motion, we could just pull that one piece of equipment out of the bid process, and then we'll see what happens next month.
Why don't, why don't you make an amendment to remove that?
Want to start over? Can I just make a comment on the amendment?
Why don't you just say?
Okay. I'll amend the motion to exclude the Gravely Promaster 260 Zero-Turn mower.
Okay, we have an amendment. Do we need a second? Okay, we have an amendment. Do we need a second on the amendment, and then, or can he amend his motion with that?
It's his own motion.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a part of the motion.
So we need another second then?
We need another second.
So we need a second for the amended motion?
Second.
Got that. Do we have any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, the amended, amended motion passes. But in unanimous vote.
The third item, regarding the Shade Tree Commission, I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Jennifer Ponce of Windmore to a new three-year term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission. Mrs. Ponce's new term of service shall expire on July 13th, 2024. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
John?
All in favor, please, I got that last one, okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
We're getting there. Next item is Resolution 1538, Montgomery County Transportation Program. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution 1538, a resolution authorizing the application to the 2021 Montgomery County Transportation Grant Program for a project known as the Walnut Avenue Pedestrian Trail Project. The project includes the construction of a pedestrian trail on the west side of Walnut Avenue from Orland Mill Road to Sandy Run Park. The grant request is in the amount of $92,809. The township has already secured a Monco 2040 implementation grant, the amount of $200,000, to facilitate the construction of the trail. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Final item this evening, Resolution Number 1539 for the Keystone Communities Program. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1539, resolution authorizing an application to the 2021 Keystone Communities Program for the known, project known as the Beicher Fields ADA Accessibility Project. The project includes the construction of three ADA accessible parking spaces and a 500-foot-long ADA-compliant access path within the park. The grant request is in the amount of $25,000 and anticipates no local match requirement. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Harbison. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. I will say, as a word of advice to the rest of you, as someone who first became president thirteen and a half years ago, the first thing I did was I went and I read Robert's Rules of Order. I don't recommend that, even with, as a member of the bar, boy, did it confuse me. There, there, read and abbreviate, there are other ways to learn how to do this. Would you agree?
I would agree. I, I have never been able to get through it.
Remarkably, it's like those old bibles. They need to have the ones that are written in English so that you can understand. It's all in there, but it's like an amendment of a motion to quell, to do this and to table this, and it's very confusing. So, that said, we are once again open for public comment. Do we have any public comment at this point? Going once, going twice. At that point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
We are.
Nice gavel.
Nice job.
No problem.